The regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community School Board of Education is now brought to order on Monday, November 6, 2017. On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to welcome each and every one of you. Your attendance this evening reflects your interest in public education and is greatly appreciated. At this time, we're going to do item number 200.18, the Pledge of Allegiance. We have two students from Marshall Upper Elementary School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Would Alexandria Jimenez-Green Shields and Kayden Keekins please come forward?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, my name is Kayden Keekins and I am a sixth grade student at Marshall Upper Elementary School in Mr. Van Waschenova's class. In my spare time, I love to compete and cheer bowling and gymnastics. Throughout my time at Wayne Westland Schools, I have been consistently on the honor roll and have maintained outstanding citizenship. I have worked very hard to become an outstanding student and I am very proud of my accomplishment. When I grow up, I want to be a veterinarian and help animals live a happy and healthy Next, I have Alexandria Jimenez-Green Shields. Hi, my name is Alexandria Jimenez-Green Shields and I am a sixth grade student in Mr. Van Waschenova's class at Marshall Elementary School. I have two stepbrothers, Christian 11, that is in the sixth grade, and Kayden 13, that is in the eighth grade. I have been in Wayne Westland School District since preschool and have made many friends and memories. Last year, I made the honor roll for each of my report cards and that was extremely important because I realized how important my education is and I worked very hard to earn those marks. Out of school, I love to participate in cheering for the Westland meters and being tomorrow's leader for Marshall Upper Elementary. Cheer and tomorrow's leaders are very important to me because it helps me to develop leadership skills that will be important as I become an adult and it helps me to be a positive role model for my classmates.
So if you ladies will stay right there, Mr. Buckaloo has something for you from the Board of Education.
Thank you very much. You guys did a great job. You're Marshall Vikings, is that right? That's super, that's super. So this is an award. It's our way of saying thank you for the great job that you did and getting our meeting off to the great start and representing your school as well as you helped this evening. And it says, "In recognition of presented to Alexandria Jimenez-Green Shields," and that is you, am I right? I got it wrong again. It's so hard. And it says, "For participation in the flag ceremony during the regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools." And did you bring anyone with you, Alexandria?
Um, I brought my mom.
Mom? And your principal? How do you do? They have names?
Uh...
Moms.
Just moms. And this author? And this one is the same, except it says Kayden Keekins. Thank you very much for both of you. You've done a wonderful job. You can't imagine just how much we appreciate you being here tonight and the great job you've done representing Marshall Upper Middle - Upper Elementary. Thank you very much.
Mr. Buckaloo, did Kayden bring someone with her?
Oh, I... I don't know who was with you.
My dad and my mom.
That is nice. Thank you.
So if you two young ladies step out into the hall, Ms. Johnson's going to take your picture and know that you're more than welcome to stay, but you don't have to stay. So if you want to sneak out during this time, you can as well. Because I know there's homework and things to be done. Thank you for joining us this evening. Moving on to item number 201.18, roll call and attendance, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Cox.
Present.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Here.
Ms. Hines. Ms. Madison.
Present.
Ms. Madell.
I'm here.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 202.18, presentations, Dr. Holt.
Yes, I'd like to introduce, um, Mr. Larson Schindler. I was looking at the data, so my apologies. I would like to introduce Mr. Larson Schindler, who will introduce our presentation for this evening.
Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you, Dr. Holt. Tonight, we're celebrating our 18th year in a row of receiving the Certificate for Excellence in Financial Reporting. We send the information in, actually, we go through the audit and, um, the audit comes back, we prepare the financial statements, and this is based on internal controls and making sure that everything is in compliance with accounting principles. This is for completion of last year's, this is the 15-16, um, award, and each year, we receive a plaque from Governor's Finance Association and from the Association of School Business Official. So, um, a CAFRA is important when you're going for a bond. It shows that you have excellent financial reporting. It also gives the people that are looking at the district transparency in the financials. So I believe I'm going - well, actually, I would like to say that this is really a district award. It's not just a business office award because everybody that does APO, everybody that has anything to do with anything in the accounting or financial area has put their fingerprint on this. It's just, we pull it together and we report it. So it's my pleasure to report that. And I think you'll have some more information when Plant Moran presents a little later this evening.
Thank you again for a job well done.
Thank you.
That's outstanding.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 203.18, citizen comments, agenda items only. Seeing none, moving on to item number 20 - oh, I'm sorry, hi. That's okay, how are you?
Um, since it is in the meeting minutes from the October - okay, since it is in the meeting minutes from October and our current superintendent at this time brought it up, um, wanted to question through the board about the Choice Works, about more information on it, the timing of it, uh, the strategic plan that goes along with it, the everything that was posted and put out in the past two weeks that I've seen. Um, I've watched the video, I have taken the survey that is online that a lot of my fellow parents do not really know about and were unaware of this. I think it - to me, and I know the board very well, I've followed this for many years, everybody knows and loves me, um, sorry, I think that, to me, this does not look transparency. To me, it looks a little shady that something is being swept under the rug. And I've always held the district and this board to a higher standard, and at this time, I have to question the timing of this and how it was presented to parents, staff, and the students. I am trying my best to get the word out there, to have people come to the meetings next week, Tuesday and Thursday, there are three, I believe, two on Tuesday, one on Thursday. I'm trying to get this information out. I really think that the board and this district needs to do a little bit better job. Again, to me, it looks like you're hiding something, that you're trying to be shady. I'm sorry I have to say it that way. Choice Works needs to have more information discussed, and I understand those meetings are set up for us, but I think the way it was put out there is a little wrong.
Thank you. Human samples. Anyone else? Moving on to item number 204.18, consent agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver.
Support.
Support by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Madison.
Yes.
Ms. Walker.
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to item number 205.18, review and approval of new resource items. Ms. Holt.
Thank you, Madam President. The first item for your approval is a small modification in existing board policy as it relates to the Family Medical Leave Act. The proposed language change aligns to our past practice and our contractual obligations, providing employees on a FMLA leave the option of using accrued vacation days, but does not require them to do so.
Could you say that again, please?
Of course. So the FMLA board policy as adopted requires employees to use their vacation days once their sick days are exhausted, and our actual past practice is to allow employees the option of using their sick - their vacation days or to go without pay, so that they can use their vacation days when they return from their leave at some point later in the year.
At this time, I'll take a motion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo. Any support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Madell. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madison.
Yes.
Ms. Madell.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Walker.
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you, motion carries. Item B, please.
Thank you. The second item for your approval is the adoption of a new board policy relating to web accessibility. The district has already taken the steps required to comply with this policy, including upgrading our website's digital content, which is now accessible to those with visual, hearing, or other impairments through the use of assistive technology. This policy was not approved by the Office of Civil Rights until September of 2017 and therefore was not available for adoption with the other Luskin-Albertson policies that were adopted earlier by the board.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Madell.
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison.
Yes.
Ms. Madell.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Ms. Walker.
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to item number 206.18, review and approval of business services and financing items, Mr. Larson Schindler.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. As mentioned earlier, tonight, we have Plant Moran here with us, we have Jeff Higgins and Jamie Essenmacher to go over the 2016-17 audit. Thank you, Jim, and good evening. As Jim mentioned, my name is Jeff Higgins, with me is Jamie Essenmacher, with Plant Moran, we're the district's independent CPA firm. And before diving into our presentation, I just also want to take a moment to commend the district for its 18 consecutive years of receiving the GFOA and the ASBO awards. It's worth noting that less than 25 districts in this - of the almost 900 school districts in the state actually receive these awards, which signifies the highest form of recognition in school district financial information. So certainly, we commend the district for its efforts in reporting comprehensive and transparent financial information. Again, it is quite an accomplishment. So there's three documents that come out of our audit process. So one is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which contains the district's audited financial statements. There's the Federal Award Supplemental Information, which contains our audit of the federal programs administered by the district, and the report to the Board of Education, which provides information on the audit process and results. As the district's independent auditors, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on these financial statements based on an audit conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. This first slide goes through the various - some of the various components that go into rendering that opinion. So in conjunction with our opinion, we're required to convey certain information to the board, and this would be information that's contained in the report to the Board of Education document. So the first item is the plan, scope, and timing of the audit. So before the beginning of our audit, during our planning phase, we do solicit input from the board and talk to a few members just to get their, um, understanding of issues that happen throughout the year and to discuss our plan, scope, and timing of the audit. We also have to account for significant accounting policies and making sure that the accounting policies of the district are appropriate and in accordance with auditing standards. We have to assess significant accounting estimates and also look at the disclosures in the financial statements, again, to make sure that they're all in accordance with accounting standards and fairly presented. The result of our audit, I'm happy to report, is our opinion, which is an unmodified or clean opinion on the audited financial statements. This is essentially our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. It's the highest level of assurance that we, as auditors, can provide on a set of financial statements. So again, an unmodified or clean opinion. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie to review some of the financial highlights for this year ended June 30th, 2017.
Thank you, Jeff. So in turning at slide four, we're going to focus on the general fund assets and liabilities. Total assets of the district were $29.6 million at June 30th, 2017. As you can see, this is on the - here, on the left side of the graph, 59% or 17.4 million is consistent of cash and investments of the district, and 11.8 million or approximately 40% is related to receivables, which is primarily consistent of the July and August stated receivables that the district accrues at June 30th. And moving over to the right side, we take a look at the total liabilities. Total liabilities were 17.5 million at June 30th, 2017, and consisted of general accounts payable due to other funds and governments and accrued payroll. As you can see, the accrued payroll is the largest liability and is 10.7 or 61% at year end. This is primarily driven by the teachers that are on 26 pays that are accrued for at June 30th. And moving to the other side, taking a look at the income statement, it takes a look - slide five takes a look at the total revenue and other financing sources. As you can see, from 2016 to 2017, revenue increased approximately $4 million or 3.86%. The general revenue is comprised of the following: local, which is primarily consistent of your property taxes; state, the state money, which is primarily consistent of the money that you receive from the state of Michigan; federal, the federal dollars that are allocated to the general fund, and then your inter-district sources as well as your transfers. Most of the balances, as you can probably see, are consistent with the prior year with the exception of the inter-district sources, which increased 3.5 million in 2016 to seven - increased from 3.5 million in 2016 to 7.7 million in 2017. The significant increase is due to the enhanced mileage that the district was awarded. Now moving down to take a look at the total expenditures of the general fund, at June 30th were $101.2 million. This is a decrease of about $80,000 in the current year. This slide then further breaks out the expenditures by instruction, support, athletics, community service, transfers, and capital outlay. As you can see, the most significant expense categories are instruction and support. However, you will also know an increase in the capital outlay from 2016 to 2017, and in 2017, capital outlay ended around $800,000. This was due to the bus purchases that the district made. Slide seven also reviews the district's expenditures and other financing uses, but takes a look at it from a slightly different angle. This slide breaks them out, breaks expenditures out by salaries, fringe benefits, and then supplies and others. This slide demonstrates that a significant portion of the district's expenses, so 87% in 2017 and 88% in 2016, are comprised of the salaries and benefits expense paid out of the general fund. This would be consistent with what we see in other districts. Typically, most districts show salaries and benefits expenses out of the general fund greater than 85%. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Jeff.
Next, we wanted to talk about fund balance. So fund balance is the fund's assets less its liabilities. It's intended to serve as a measure of the financial resources available in a fund. It's essentially the savings of that fund, if you will. And a reasonable level of fund balance helps pay bills so that the instructional programs can be carried on without disruption from circumstances outside of the district's control. Our bullets here list a couple of the items that typically districts face, you know, unexpendaged circumstances or expenditures, unexpected repairs, those types of things. So again, it's essentially that savings account that helps the districts meet unplanned items that crop up throughout the year. So next, we just want to take a look at the level of fund balance on a, um, just relative basis. You can see for the last five years, 13 through 16, the last four years, the fund balance ranged from about 3.4 million to 5.7 million. This current year, we did add about $6.4 million to the fund balance, so at June 30th, 2017, in the general fund, we had a fund balance of about 12 million. This, of course, then raises the question, what is a reasonable level of fund balance for the district to maintain at the end of the year? This next slide gives some context to that question. Typically, when we're evaluating fund balance, we look at it as a percentage of the district's expenditures. So for example, if we take Wayne Westland's fund balance at the end of the year of about 12.1 million, and we divide it by our expenditures of about 100 million, that gives us a percentage of about 12.1%. And you can see where we've been the last few years historically, so we've ranged from about 3.3 to 5.6. And then we also give that in relation to the state average for the districts across the state fund balance percentage. So you can see for the last few years, we've been below the state average. The information for the districts across the state as of June 30th, 2017 is not yet available, but I would expect our 12.1% to be right at about state average as of June 30th, 2017, when all the numbers are fully accumulated across the state. Fund balance becomes important because we talked about some of the uncertainties and challenges facing school districts in Michigan from a financial perspective, and this graph is one of the issues that districts have to deal with and one of the challenges that districts face related to funding. This gives a 10-year history of the fund - the foundation allowance, the per pupil foundation allowance. So it's important to remember that all the numbers on this chart are determined in Lansing. So every year, the state adopts a state aid act which sets the per pupil foundation. The per pupil foundation funds roughly 90% of the district's general fund, so obviously, it's its primary source of funding. And you can see for the beginning of this chart, for several years there, there was no increase at all, and then in 2012, 2013, there was a 12% reduction in the funding to the general fund. So it went from the $7,957 down to $7,013 on a per pupil basis. And again, while there's been some slow increases since then, you can see our fund balance, our foundation allowance, excuse me, for 2017, 2018, is still well below where it was in 2011, 2012. So again, it just demonstrates the challenging environment that school districts in Michigan have to deal with and that your funding is essentially set in Lansing, you really don't have a lot of ability to control the per pupil foundation. And the other half of that equation is the student enrollment. Again, this is another indication of the challenges facing districts across Michigan. That foundation allowance we just talked about is, as we mentioned, on a per pupil basis. So when we have a declining, um, funding level combined with declining enrollment, it just creates challenges from a financial perspective. And this shows Wayne Westland's student enrollment for the last several years, and this would be reflective of what's happening across the state. Total enrollment across the state is down roughly 12% for the last 10 years, so Wayne Westland's figures would be similar to what districts across the state are also dealing So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions. We were hoping to just, again, provide some of the financial highlights and touch upon the environment that the districts are operating in this year. But if there's any questions, we're happy to address those at this time.
Any questions for me, one? All right. So at this time, I'll take a motion. If there's no questions.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Madell, supported by Mr. Cox. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you, motion carries. And thank you again, you always do a great job.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Moving on to item B, please.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the Tinkham Building lease in your agenda. And your board agenda is a contract proposal prepared by Clark Hill to lease our vacant Tinkham Building. Late spring of 2017, we were approached by a nonprofit inquiring about a sale or lease of the district's Tinkham Building. The nonprofit is called Service to Enhance Potential, or STEP, is a nonprofit funded through federal grants that works with - they work with handicapped adults in a transition to work capacity. Based on our discussions over the summer, STEP reviewed their finances and does not believe it has the ability to purchase the building at this time. They hope that by consolidating their locations, they may be in a position to purchase the building in three to five years. Their proposal is a 10-year lease with optional renewal for two five-year periods. Additionally, STEP may purchase the building with a 120-day notice. Based on market study of comps in the area provided by Plant Moran Cressa, the lease starts at $3 per square foot and in years one and two, and then increases 50 cents per foot every two years until it reaches $5 per square foot in year nine. With the mechanicals being a concern, the lessee will accept more responsibility for mechanicals in years one through eight. The lease is a net-net lease, where the lessee assumes responsibility for utilities, internal maintenance, that's custodial, and snow and lawn maintenance. Based on the proposed lease terms, the lease will generate in years - the first year, $152,814 in rent and save approximately $27,000 in utilities, so it's approximately $180,000 per year.
At this time, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Cox.
Support.
Supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I have a question. When would they take possession?
Uh, well, um, they wanted to move in tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, you know, but we'll have to, you know, put signatures on the contract, you know, we'll have to meet. Realistically, I believe they want to be moved in by January 1, so they can get out - they're currently in two separate buildings. They're trying to consolidate into one. So the idea of when they were saying they would like it the day after, they would like to start moving things in, so they don't have to do a mass move in, you know, in January. So it would be somewhat of a slow move in, but they would start paying rent when they start moving in.
Okay.
So all of our furniture has been removed from the building?
Yes, yes. It's a building, just the bare essentials.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you, motion carries. Item C, please.
All right, thank you. On page 26 of your agenda, I'm requesting board authorization to reimburse Dr. Holt in the amount of $751.06 for August 30th, 2017 to September 1 for recruitment expenses incurred to return to the district for an area.
At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Madell, supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Mr. Cox?
Well, just fundamentally, I - I'm just not in favor of this, and I'll tell you why. I don't consider it a recruiting expense. A recruiting expense is when we paid Michigan Association of School Boards in Marlene to assist us with the interview process, but that was an expense occurred in the pursuit of the job, and I know it's not a tremendous amount of money, but there's other people that expended monies to be here too, and maybe that's insignificant by comparison, but just, I think it sets a precedent that, I don't know, have we set that precedent before?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, in my understanding, is when you have a candidate that's come from out of state, the protocol is to, when you bring them back, if you decide to bring them back for a second interview, that you would cover the expenses for them to come back from out of state.
Protocol defining as?
What passed practice from other districts. This is our first time bringing someone in from out of state, so I went by - we looked at a consultant told to us on how things are done when you bring up a candidate from out of state.
I don't know if we brought a candidate from out of state, but a candidate from out of state pursued a job in our district.
Okay.
out of state pursued a job in our district. And this is the first time I've heard of this. And I thought that the compensation program was fair and equitable. And I just, it's, it's not, it's not the money necessarily. It's just, it seems to me that it's not a recruiting expense fundamentally, not for us. So it's, I'm just, I'm not going to be supporting that.
At this time, we have a motion on the floor. Announce, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
No.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
If the record show five and two.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item number two zero seven point one eight, Head Start Monthly Report. Ms. Medel?
The information for September and October Head Start Monthly Report has not yet been finalized yet, so you will be receiving September, October, and November in December.
So seeing that we don't have a report yet, I think that we need to. Moving on to item number two zero eight point one eight, Board of Education Committee Reports. So we'll start off with Mr. Buckaloo with the Finance Committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The following is a summary of the Finance Committee meeting on October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. The Finance Committee met on Monday, October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, from eleven oh five a.m. to twelve thirty-two p.m. Board members present were Tom Buckaloo and David Cox. Fred Weaver was absent. Also in attendance were Shelby, Shelley Holt, Superintendent, Jim Larson Scheidler, Deputy Superintendent of Administration, Administrative and Business Services, Jeff Higgins and Jamie Eisenmacher from Plant Moran. Jeff Higgins and Jamie Eisenmacher reviewed the district's audit results that will be presented to the entire Board of Education at the November sixth, two thousand seventeen meeting. Jim Larson Scheidler presented a proposed lease agreement for the Tinkham Building and asked that the lease agreement be presented to the entire Board of Education for approval at the November sixth, two thousand seventeen meeting. The committee had many questions and much discussion took place regarding the lease. Jim Larson Scheidler presented a recommendation to purchase Chromebooks and computing carts. The total purchase is approximately four hundred thousand dollars. There was much discussion and questions regarding this purchase and how it relates to student achievement. It was agreed that this purchase should be placed on hold until further information can be obtained. The next Finance Committee meeting was scheduled for January twentieth, two thousand eighteen, at eleven a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to Ms. Hines, if you can bring up the Policy Committee notes, please.
Meeting called to order at six forty-eight p.m. In attendance were Melody Hines, Carol Medel, Shelley Holt, and Tom Buckaloo serving for Sally Madison. The revised language of Policy four zero zero point zero three regarding FMLA was reviewed and discussed. It was recommended to send the revised policy language to the whole board for a vote. The new language for the web accessibility policy was reviewed and discussed. It was recommended to send the new policy eight zero 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 point zero seven to the full board for a vote. A discussion was had on the implications and possibilities of partnerships with the Michigan Department of Education. This will affect Hoover Elementary students and staff and the potential bringing services of learning opportunities to the students. Melody will report out the board notes for the committee meeting. The meeting was adjourned at eight twenty-five p.m. Respectfully, Carol Medel.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Moving on to item number two zero nine point one eight, Superintendent Report. Dr. Holt?
Thank you, President Walker. In continue, first thing I wanted to mention is that choice work does continue. And continuing with the plans of my predecessor, choice work continues as we want to ensure that all members of the community have an opportunity to participate either online or in person. So there are three committee, community meetings set up for the week of November thirteenth. So please, please, please go ahead and attend and participate online. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, as you may have heard, I did receive a call from State Superintendent Wiston regarding our invitation to participate as a partnership district. We held our first meeting with the Michigan Department of Education, represented the board and union district and Wayne Risa leadership to discuss next steps. It is my belief that this agreement will assist us in moving forward and provide the necessary considerations and supports for our staff and administration and students to move forward. We look forward to more conversations with our partners and designing an agreement that enables us to make dramatic gains in student achievement. More information to come. So based on the fact that we have been invited to participate as a partnership district, I wanted to give some insights. I did receive quite a few calls around how did we get to this point? Why were we invited as opposed to the other districts? There were seven districts that were invited to participate, to join the current nine districts that are partnership districts. So I brought for you an overview of our data to really get a picture of why we were invited to participate. As you can see, in the far column on the first page, we have a district to state comparison. So if you look at the far column, which is highlighted in pink, that is the difference between how we performed in our district to how the state performed. And so in each of the far right columns, you'll see it's highlighted in pink if it was a decrease or if it's below the state average. And I'll move forward to, to the left, to what was in green. If anyone from the audience would like a copy of, Rossin has some copies over here that she can hand you if you would like to see one. The information you have, it starts on the left, I mean, on the right from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen. And if there was an increase from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen in our district percent proficient on state assessments, then it's highlighted in green. And we do have some areas of success, as you can see, in mathematics for this year in grade three, we did increase two point two percent. In science, the last two years, in two thousand sixteen and seventeen in fourth grade, we have had slight increases. And we've seen overall increases in grade five, so something's really going well with our fifth grade classes, yeah, in making sure that we're showing growth. And so what we want to see is continuous growth towards proficiency. As you can see here, in every area, we are, we are below the state average. If you turn to the second page, we also, I also wanted to take a look at our district data in comparison to Wayne County. As you can see here, it's the same graph, but it's just now Wayne County comparison versus state comparison. And we can see back in two thousand fifteen, we were above the state in third grade English Language Arts by seven point seven percent. And in two thousand fifteen, we're above the state in eleventh grade Social Studies by four point three percent. As we proceed to this year, we could, what we want to see is what you see on the bottom of two thousand seventeen, reducing Social Studies at the eleventh grade level has increased to forty-three point seven percent from thirty-four percent the year before, and we are above the county in this area. What we want to do, the first steps to starting to improve it, is to first hit the county level, then we hit the state level, and we surpass that. As we can see, there's still some, we have some areas of growth, but because for pretty much three steady years, we have been below the state level and below the county level, that was part of what led to our invitation to participate as a partnership district. On the final page, what you see here is a map that compares how we are looking at growth and proficiency within Wayne County. At the bottom of this graphic, we circled Wayne Westland, and thanks to Donna Lockery for adding in the amount per pupil that each of these districts received. What we want to do is move, move up on this graph and to the right. We want to move into high growth, while maybe we might not be as proficient, but we want to move to high growth. We want to show that our kids and our students and our teachers are making that growth. Then we'll move over to high growth and high proficiency. So as we look at this data, we can see part of what, part of the reason that we were invited to become a partnership district, and as we move forward, a few of the goals that we are focused on is providing an increased focus in all of our school sites on the use of formative, summative, quantitative, and qualitative assessment data to drive organizational and instructional decision-making. Everything we do needs to be based on how well our students are achieving. And so right now, we are looking at the creation of benchmark assessments that align to our standards-based scope and sequence in all subject areas. We began those conversations today to look at our previous curriculum guides and start to move forward on having curriculum guides and benchmark assessments that align to not only the standards, but that we can assess over time to see how our kids are doing and not wait until state assessment. Not to say that we are, but we want to make sure those processes are very refined and systemic. The second is the development and use of the academic return on investment processes to ensure that we have a clear picture of what is working and what is not working, and that the programs that we are implementing in our schools are appropriately onboarded, and if necessary, they need to be exited. Mr. Larson Scheidler is beginning to spearhead that work. He went to, oh, on a conference last week with a team of site and district-level administrators to begin that process of looking at, how are we going to assess academic return on investment on any of the programs that we have in our school sites, and also with our expenditures as well? How is, how is our money actually leading towards improved student achievement? The third is ensuring that the strategic plan is addressed and appropriate portions are included in our work to develop the state partnership agreement. We want to make sure that the pieces of the strategic plan that have either already been started or have been completed, we move those along and really focus it on Goals One and Two, which have to do with instructional improvement and providing social, emotional, behavioral, and other types of supports to our students and families in our schools. That's Goals One and Two on the current strategic plan. The final thing is to look at how systems and processes that we have in our district ensure a high level of effective support is provided to our buildings and departments. Our principals, our teachers, our leaders, our classified personnel, our support personnel, all need to have effective support in order to do their jobs and know that what they're doing is working. Fourth, I want to talk about that as our, as we are continuing their choice work and in light of what we have learned, it is imperative that we begin the work of rightsizing our district to prepare for what is to come in the future based on current enrollment projections. As we know from the choice work process and the work of my predecessor, whom I respect rightly, we are looking at possibly two thousand less students by two thousand twenty-two. As such, we need to start looking at how we are going, with the choice work process, we're looking at how we're going to address this in grade level spans, and then looking at buildings, et cetera. But we also need to look at what we're doing here to provide support centrally and shifting our central office support to meet those needs. As part of the comprehensive needs assessment, which will be part of the partnership agreement, I'm working with local and state partners to restructure central office services to more efficiently address the needs of our school sites and support our students and families towards increased gains in student achievement. The goal of this work is to ensure our school sites, particularly our classroom teachers and our building-level administrators, are receiving ample and adequate support based on data-driven needs to address academic, social, emotional, and behavioral learning goals, as well as implement programming that is effective at all levels. More information will come to our board as it becomes available to me. Finally, I want to end on a high note. We have received word from the state that our thirty-one A funding is going, the state recently sent out a publication in November of two thousand seventeen which outlines the new guidelines for these funds. The good news for us here in Wayne Westland is that it allows us a broader description of how we can use thirty-one A funds to include students in any of the criteria, as opposed to having to meet several criteria in order to receive consideration for funding. This funding is designed to be used to implement MTSS, or Multi-Tierred System of Supports, as the primary vehicle for meeting proficiency standards for all pupils. We are currently exploring how we are serving our students' academic, social, emotional, behavioral needs in the direct instruction setting, as well as the types of supports that we need in a tiered, or tiered system of supports, so that they are available to students, educators, families, and leaders in all of these areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Moving on to two zero, no, two one zero point one eight, Citizen Comments. Sir, if you go to the podium, please state your name and your address, please.
Hi, good evening. Mike McDermott, six five two Forest Street, Westland, Michigan. Just a quick question in regards to the per pupil foundation allowance from the Plant Moran Audit. Do the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen numbers reflect the Wayne Risa village, or is that reflective strictly of the dollars allocated from Lansing?
Is that the only question that you have? Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to item number two one one.
Yeah, Shauna.
I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand.
Not that I want to wait and wait, and I need the clock to tell.
There you go.
There you go. Thank you. Um, what I was going to ask and/or bring up was just talked about by the superintendent. What exactly does that mean when you have, when you say partnership? What exactly are we giving up a hundred percent to the state? I've always thought that Wayne Westland has always strived to get the best technology, get the best education, get the best testing and grades for our children. All my kids, among my last child who's in ninth grade, has always been striving for excellence, and I've always commended that and loved the district for that. Don't like when you hear that the state is coming in. To me, it's apparent it means that they're taking over. What exactly is being taken over? That's what I'm concerned about. On a positive note, and I'm not Debbie Downer the whole night, I do appreciate that Hicks and Hamilton are off of our own priority list that we have, those grades have achieved. And I did like seeing that in the newspaper and reading that. So I'm just concerned about where this is going for us in the future.
Thank you, Miss Sampson. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to two one one point one eight, Reviewer Recommendations, Board of Education. Mr. Buckaloo?
Thank you. My thanks again to Alexandria and Keaton for getting us off to the great start this evening. They did their job, although I kind of botched their names up, but pleased to have them here. Congratulations to Mr. Larson Scheidler and to his entire staff, and as he suggested to the entire district, for another outstanding audit report. I think the operative words tonight were "unmodified and clear report," which is about as good as it gets. In addition, Mr. Larson Scheidler's department received an excellence award from the Association of School Business Officials, and also from the Government Finance Officers Association. This is among auditors, excuse me, among finance people. This, again, is a real feather in their hats, and congratulations, sir, for that. In the area of announcements, tomorrow is Election Day. If you're in a district where there's a vote taking place, you owe it to your neighbors to get out and express your opinion. Saturday is Veterans Day. We won't be in session on Saturday, but there will be flag ceremonies at each of the high schools at eleven o'clock on the morning of Friday, November tenth. And if you have an opportunity to get around to see one of those celebrations, again, I think it's the appropriate thing to do. Tuesday, November fourteenth, is Chef Tony's Annual Thanksgiving Lunch. I've gone several years in a row. I can tell you that it's a great lunch put on by a great man, but more importantly, it goes to serve an even better cause. The benefits from this luncheon will go to the Family Resource Center. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Ms. Madison?
In reference to my vote on two oh six point one eight, item C, I'd like to make the following statement. It is my understanding trustees hold a position of public trust, and we are responsible to account for indirect management and expenditure of all monies by exercising good judgment of what is reasonable, necessary, and in the best interest of the school district. The school board accommodated the superintendent during the interview process by stepping out of the set selection process twice to guarantee her interviews, to allow her a discount on the airfare she was paying for as requested. to guarantee her interviews to allow her a discount on the airfare she was paying for as requested. The superintendent had opportunity for such negotiation prior to the interview and upon receiving the contract in which she has accepted and was graciously given five thousand dollars allowance for moving expense. In relation to the IRS, this request is considered a non-qualified moving and related expense due to the flight travel occurring prior to the acceptance of the position. Furthermore, a reasonable time period by the IRS is constituted by one to adequately account for their expenses within sixty days after they were paid or incurred. Therefore, that is why I voted no.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Mr. Katz?
Thank you, Madam President. Two things. First, the, uh, this evening, the committee report from, uh, Mr. Buckaloo regarding the Finance Committee meeting is in the agenda after the vote, that, uh, the issues are being discussed. I, for one, would like to hear the report of the committees that I'm not a member of before I vote on issues that those committees reviewed. Uh, and secondly, the very first meeting that I was involved with, Dr. Holt, uh, she impressed me by saying, everything we do needs to be judged against our student performance, and most certainly does. And I know that we can't open up every box and look at it like we did with the, uh, uh, the decision about whether or not we're going to purchase Chromebooks right now. And by the way, I know that you're going to be looking at that, and I think that's a great thing to look at. And I, I'd like to know where that goes, because that was, that was on the schedule. But you're absolutely right about that, and you were frank about it, and you were frank again this evening, and, uh, I think that's good for our district.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Ms. Heinz?
I'd like to thank the students that did the Pledge of Allegiance today. It was awesome. And last week was a very, um, eye-opening experience. Like, I was able to go to the Wayne County Risa meeting, and they were talking about the zero tolerance suspension rate. And it kind of tied into what Dr. Holt was saying with the social and emotional support. And we were learning in that meeting with the Wayne County Risa about childhood trauma, and how it affects education and lifestyles, and, you know, it was, it was really, really eye-opening. And then looking at some of these charts too, about the different schools, the areas. Um, and I definitely appreciate you guys with the finances. That's awesome. We really do appreciate that. And I do like that you guys are looking into the programs to see what's working and what's not working, because, like, looking at this hard data, I'm seeing things in a different light that I didn't see before. So it's a new awakening, just really digging down to the numbers. And, um, I also, um, I'm pretty excited about the partnership. I read a lot of positive things about that, and I think that's good if we're going to have help to help us, you know, get our schools up to par, because looking at the numbers is, I didn't know, you know, looking at them is really surprising to what I thought. So this will be a help to help us increase some of these numbers here. And I also like the, um, part with giving our staff more support, working with administration. So I think that is so important, because we have to make sure we take care of our teachers to make sure they're taking care of our students as well. And, oh, two more things. They are having a play at a Wayne Memorial. It's going to be November the ninth at the Stockmeyer Auditorium. Is that, is it six thirty?
Seven.
At seven. And John Glenn is also having a play, uh, November the sixteenth at seven. So these are really good to, you know, support our children. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just have one thing to say tonight, that, um, I'm very happy we're able to lease, uh, Tinkham. And I would, uh, like the community to take notice of that, that, uh, we're working together, uh, to, uh, accommodate shortfalls, any financial shortfalls in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Ms. Medel?
Again, congratulations, Mr. Scheidler. God, I hate it when I have a wax tongue and it melts on my teeth. Mr. Larson Scheidler, and congratulations to your department. Again, another plaque, another award, you're doing something right. What can I say? Uh, I got a chance to go to a couple musical concerts. We have some very talented kids in our district, and they get a chance to show us how talented they are in these kinds of concerts and, uh, musical programs. Uh, got also got a chance to go to the advisory, uh, meeting at, uh, Career Tech with a lot of parents, where they got a chance to actually see the, the programs from their side, not just listening to the kids explain it, but going in and actually seeing what the classroom looks like, what the kids are doing, and be part of it. I also attended the Bright Futures Open House that they had at Marshall a couple of weeks ago. This is such an important program for an after-school, uh, group of kids who really need the extra support that Bright Futures offers. This is not a babysitting program by any means at all. They offer all kinds of social and emotional support to our kids besides academic. For us to lose any of our sites is tragic, but I know that their funding, just like everybody else's, is always up in the air. And we have suffered some losses because of loss, lack of funding to their program. And this is in cooperation with Eastern Michigan University. They have made it quite clear that we are their favorite, and so they try the hardest that they can to make sure that we keep as many of our programs as possible. A few of us are going off to Lansing at the end of this week for the annual, uh, MASB Leadership Conference. And so, again, I, I fully expect to hear a lot of legislation that is on the horizon, along with things like, uh, zero tolerance policies that need to be shifted in the state legislature to reflect, uh, restorative justice instead. Mrs. Heinz mentioned the school plays that were coming up, and we also talked about the partnership. I was able to be part of the discussion the other day about partnership with the state of Michigan. There's two ways of looking at this. There's always the negative side where, you know, you're not, you're not quite trusting the state of Michigan because you've been burned in the past, and here we go again. But I also look at it as, uh, the positive side. They're going to come in with a lot of resources, resources that we can't always provide because of finances or because of manpower. They're going to come to us with plenty of things to help our students grow. And I have to look at this as a positive thing that we would not get if it weren't for the fact that there was such a need. So as for them coming in and throwing out, you know, the baby with the bathwater, that's not happening here. They want to support us. You've seen them try this in other school districts. They have not been successful. Why would they come here and do it to us? If they weren't successful before, they wouldn't be successful doing it here. So in this case, it's, let's shift the focus one eighty, and let's see what we can do to help, not destroy. So I'm looking forward to seeing what the state brings to us.
Um, normally, as, by the time it gets to me, my colleagues have already stated everything, so I don't want to just keep beating the same dead horse. But I will say that the two who asked questions, that someone will, um, get back with you regarding the answers to your questions, um, that we did hear them, and I'm not just ignoring you. Um, and I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you for taking your time out of your busy schedules to come and spend your evenings with us. Um, and remember that each one of us on here has the district at heart. We have the best interests of the district at heart, and that the decisions that we make are not done lightly. Um, we all have promised to be good trustees and good stewards of the district. And, um, the decisions that are made are not made based on personal, personal thoughts or personal things. It's based on, um, the facts, the data, and what is given. And so with that being said, I just thank you all for coming. At this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Medel?
Second.
Moved, uh, second by Mr. Buckaloo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Have a good and safe night.